One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a public hearing on community power proposal for Newport. This is the second of two public hearings. The first public hearing was held on April 10th at 6:30 PM in this room. This is the second of the required public hearings on community power for Newport, and it's being held April 25th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Selectman Meeting Room at 15 Saffy Street, Newport, New Hampshire. Purpose of this hearing is for the community to learn about the Community Power Proposal that is available to residents of the town. And at this point, I will turn it over to Town Manager Hunter Reisberg to introduce our guest.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This evening, we have Henry Herd, who is working for the Community Power Coalition. He's the guy behind the curtain, so to speak, as I like to call it affectionately. He's the one that has helped us organize all the paperwork, the presentations, and help us lay out the steps that are necessary to get us to join the coalition. And he was with us at the last meeting via Zoom, but he's here in person tonight. And if it meets with your approval, we're going to have him go through the same PowerPoint that he did last week. And you can ask questions that maybe we didn't answer last week or new ones that come up, and see if there's anybody from the public that has any questions that they might want to answer. And we'll take it from there.
Okay, let me just add that the PowerPoint we're seeing tonight, aside from the fact that it has today's date on it, through our town website, you can access the PowerPoint with the date of Monday, April 10th on it, which was the previous meeting, if you want to follow along with your own PowerPoint.
Right, so the same presentation?
Right.
Right.
So, that is on our website.
Correct. Henry, you're up.
Okay. Thank you for inviting me out. It's good to be with you again and good to come out in person. And we do have the same presentation from the April 10th public hearing, so I'll move through the same material, but, you know, definitely welcome questions, discussions as we go. And I guess before we dive in, I'll just provide a little bit of context about the Community Power Coalition in New Hampshire. This is the new nonprofit that was created in October of 2021. And the organization had its annual membership and board meetings this past Friday on the 21st. So, just a brief report from that. In the conducted business at the meeting, three new members were admitted for a total of 33 cities, towns, and counties that are members, representing 22% of the population of New Hampshire. Those members elected from among the 33 of them, a board of directors of 20 individuals who sit on the Board of Directors. So, there will be monthly board meetings, and there will be three times per year membership meetings of the full 33 membership. And they also met with and welcomed the new Chief Executive Officer, who has been hired, Mr. Brian Cowan, who formerly served as the Director of Power Procurement for New Hampshire Electric Cooperative, and previously the Vermont Public Power Supply Authority. So, these are two public power agencies in northern New England, and he's deep experience in developing energy projects in the public interest. So, very excited to have Mr. Cowan joining as Chief Executive Officer on May 22nd. He will begin work. Additionally, the Coalition adopted its annual budget. And the projected revenues for calendar year 2023 are $51 million, with projected expenses being $38 million, and for net financial reserves accruing to approximately $13 million. These are reserves that are held jointly on behalf of the collective community members and controlled by those members through this nonprofit agency. So, that's some of the summary of the status of the Coalition's business. And as to provide context for sort of the statewide community power movement that is unfolding with 10 cities and towns launching service, actually right now. Yesterday, the first customers were customer enrollment requests were submitted to utilities, and customers will start receiving community power this week for the city of Nashua and for some of the other 10 communities across the state. And that will then sort of transition over over the course of the month of May. So, we're really launching the market in real time right now. And Newport is very well positioned to be a fast follower and to sort of benefit from all the hard work to set this up over the past couple of years, go to town meeting this season, and be prepared to bring lower rates to the residents and businesses come spring of next year, luckily. So, that's just to set the stage. And I guess I'm happy to get into the presentation. I'm not sure if there's any comments or questions before we dive in.
Let's go through the presentation and then address, unless...
Well, I just have a, I don't know why this popped into my head. This is for Hunter. Could we have a special town meeting without having to wait a year?
You know, we are on for this year's town meeting. The Warren Article...
Oh, that's right, come right up.
Yeah, so we're good for that. We're all set. That's kind of why we're rushing this, because I didn't want to miss town meeting, because otherwise we'd have to wait a year.
Okay, so it will be...
Voted on on the night.
Of May.
Warren Article of May, this May.
Oh, that's right, it was a Warren.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, as soon as that gets approved, as soon as Seth gets approved, we're in pretty good shape to move forward.
Did you present that Warren Article?
What's that?
Warren Article 18.
Thank you very much. Yes, I did.
So, this presentation covers the Newport Community Power Electric Aggregation Plan, which there's a process laid out in New Hampshire RSA 53E for how towns like Newport can adopt community power at town meeting and then authorize their board of selectmen to contract with the service provider. And this is all towards the ends of providing greater choice in energy supply for the community, lowering energy rates, and then just broadening the options that the community has available to them. So, we'll talk about what it is. We'll talk specifically about the plan. I gave a little bit of an introduction on the Coalition, and then we can talk timeline as well. But broadly speaking, this is a program to pool or aggregate demand purchasing power for electricity to lower costs and expand access to renewable energy, if that is an objective of the community. And I mentioned the RSA, which is worth taking a look at, RSA 53E. And really, the intent of the legislature is to push forward sort of local control, local authority to have a say and a voice in the power market and to choose their power sources and really innovate. So, that's the focus of the legislature's intent, is local control to access the market and lower costs. And there's three pieces. There's on the purchasing side, Newport Community Power was buy electricity from the sources chosen by the town or chosen by an individual customer. That power would be delivered by Eversource over the same infrastructure. Eversource is still compensated for delivery. And importantly, there is no real financial impact to the utility. Because they have sold off power plants, they're not in the power supply or generation business anymore. They are entirely financially indifferent to these programs. So, they still own the grid, they still send the bill. You just get to choose where the power's coming from.
Let me get clarification on one point. I've heard some people comment that because you're switching from Eversource, from the Eversource-selected provider, your electricity provider will be a lesser rate per kilowatt hour or whatever, but Eversource will stick you with a higher fee for carrying it.
So, that is a misunderstanding, and that's not accurate. They will have the same delivery charge in that one half of the bill, and that will remain the same.
Okay, the Eversource delivery fee that we're, that's half of our bill, that's set by the Public Utilities Commission twice a year or something?
It's set by the Public Utility Commission whenever the Eversource comes in for a rate case and asks for a rate increase. And then the supply portion, that is also approved by the Public Utility Commission on a six-month basis, but that's, Eversource doesn't make any profit on that. They're just passing it through.
But no matter whoever the supplier of the electricity is, whatever source charges is the same, whether it's one they pick or one we pick, or one an individual picks?
That's right. So, maybe Newport is on Newport Community Power, and they have the Newport Community Power rate, and maybe the next town over is still on the Eversource power, and they'll have the Eversource rate.
Some on North American, and Eversource is still like, I still pay them a fee every month.
Right.
Is that like 13 bucks or something?
Yeah, it's maddening, but still paying.
So, this just highlights some of the benefits. I mentioned local control. We've seen some of the other markets demonstrating long-term lower costs. And we'll talk about the rates that are currently available to community power customers and considerable discounts available to them. And then longer term, a lot of communities are motivated by the possibility of using these programs to sign power purchase agreements, to develop solar arrays and other generation assets, to then provide power from a local source, locally economic development benefits to the residents in a cost-effective way. So, building local energy projects is an option longer term, among other innovations. And what you have in your plan is language that ensures that the program will only launch if it is able to initially offer residential default rates that are lower than those offered by Eversource. So, you're guaranteeing you're not going to go live with this unless there's benefits to customers. We talked a little bit about the bill, so the blue portion, and this is dated, so the numbers are just illustrative. This is before we had the major price hikes of this past winter.
I was going to say.
So, we should probably update that, but...
Yeah, probably.
The supply charge is what we're discussing. That is what it affected. The green delivery charge is the Eversource portion that remains unchanged, and that is the totality of Eversource's profit is there.
That's quite a bit higher than what the delivery source actually is, at least in my case.
You're delivering it to Ben, aren't you?
I am some now, yeah.
Again, these numbers are for illustrative purposes from a dated bill. On the second page of the bill, it's broken out supplier at the top, delivery at the bottom. And that supplier line item is what would change from a customer's perspective, and it would then read either Newport Community Power or just Community Power if and when the program comes online with the associated rate. So, just some of the key points. If and when the program launches, most Eversource default supply customers would be automatically enrolled, same service, lower price, and Newport Community Power is the new default provider. This is a voluntary program. Customers can come and go as they please. They can opt in and out without any kind of penalty. And for those folks who are shopping with a third party, whatever it may be, they're unaffected, they would receive notice, but nothing would change for those customers unless they chose to join. And there are no tax impacts. That's prohibited under the law, and this has to be funded through the supply charge paid on the customer's bill.
Customers should be aware, though, if they drop, if they have a different, like I said, I, you know, I have solar, which, of course, it hasn't been shining much lately, but if there's a penalty in some cases for dropping. So, they ought to be aware of that.
They should be, and we advise them to make sure they understand their fine print and their termination provisions. And they may, you know, they may want to wait until that term expires.
Yeah, right. That's a good point, yeah.
So, the plan, as laid out in RSA 53E, the governing body, the board of selectmen may appoint a committee, which is, I think, an option before you get this evening or perhaps on Monday, to provide oversight for this plan. And the plan has the details of how the program operates and ensures it is compliant with state law. And in state law, there is a required multiple public hearings. This is the second of those two required public hearings. The plan outlines goals and objectives, what you hope to achieve. It defines governance, you know, what is the authority of the board of selectmen versus the committee, who would be responsible for implementation, which would be a third party of your choosing, whether that be Community Power Coalition or another provider. It describes how customers would be noticed and enrolled, and what some example of the options that would be available to them. And then there's various legal requirements. You have to treat similar customers fairly and equally, and you have to meet certain minimum environmental standards in accordance with state law. Specifically, we have a renewable portfolio standard that sets minimum renewable energy requirements for suppliers. And there's other details, such as net metering customers and ensuring that they would be included and how they would be included, and then ensuring that customers who are on assistance, electric assistance programs, will still get their discount. This is income-qualified customers who can participate and still qualify for their discount. The plan does not commit Newport or the board of selectmen to acting, and it doesn't impose any financial commitment or liability. If it is adopted at town meeting, it authorizes you to entertain contracts, but it doesn't require you to act. This is just the chapters, introduction, overview, goals, statutory requirements, and then a couple of informational and sort of regulatory required appendices. You know, there's a data protection plan that members of the Coalition have adopted and just acknowledge that we're providing customer data protection and things like that. So, the plan, I believe, is available on the website. And I'll also speak a little bit about how the notification enrollment process works. So, a couple, I guess, a month, 30 days ago, a little more than 30 days ago, the Coalition nailed 65,000, 70,000 enrollment notices to all of the customers and to the communities. As an example of one of those, we worked with the membership to develop the, you know, custom logo and branding with the community and some of the language within the notification. But essentially, it lays out what I just said. Welcome to Newport Community Power. Here are your options. Call this phone number, go to this website, email this line, do any of these things if you want to opt out, if you want to opt in, if you want to pick a clean product, whatever you want to do. So, that's all explained for the customer in the notice. Customers would receive those 30 days in advance of any enrollment. They could choose to opt out before that or opt in before that. And then after the 30-day period, they would be enrolled. And once enrolled, they can still opt out at any point in time. It just, that would become effective on their next monthly bill cycle. The next time the utility reads their meter in a bill, a monthly bill gets sent, is the point at which they switch in and out.
Can I ask a question about that?
Please.
Because for some people, that's kind of a scary thing in terms of, okay, I'm going to be in it. How do I opt out of it? Can you just clearly identify the process for opting out?
Yeah, so there's three things the customer can do. They can go to communitypowernh.gov, and there will be a little form there where they can type in their Eversource account number and just click opt out, and that will opt them out. So, there's a web option, and then there's a phone line, 1-866-603-POWR, or seven...
Whatever that is.
Six, nine, seven. Could you give that number again? One, sorry, 1-866-603-POWR. They call that phone number, and they say, I'd like to opt out, and a customer service representative will process that request. And it's easiest if the customer is able to give their account number, so we can identify them and process the request. And then the third is email info@communitypowernh.gov. And these are Coalition customer service systems. There are other, there's other providers.
When you send out the notification, is all of that information going to be included in that?
Yes.
Okay. Because for some people, I mean, if I'm sitting there, I have no computer. This has happened to me. That's how some people feel about it. I don't want to get the heck out of it. And, you know, I think we need to make it as easy as possible for people to be able to opt out.
Yeah, I agree.
Not that they will, but I don't want them stuck in it because they don't know how to do it.
Absolutely. And the design of this mailer, I mean, there are a lot of folks who are on select boards or city councils or municipal staff who are working on this with the perspective of, you know, we're providing the service to our customers, but this is not like a sales pitch. This is an informative document, and we want to make it as easy and clear as possible. And we're not, there's no sort of hidden fine print here. There is some, you know, technical details on page three about if you're net metering or if you're a large commercial industrial customer, that kind of thing. But yes, it's really meant to be as clear as we can be.
Okay.
Right, but some people are like, there's no such thing as a free lunch. This is a scam, you know, but people need to realize that this is something the community as a whole has looked at. We've had hearings, it's been done across the state and communities, and it's a way of aggregating the purchasing of electricity or giving the community at lower cost.
I think most people will understand that. But there are some people, I've always paid my bill here. Why am I suddenly getting this? And I don't want to do it without even thinking. They don't, they don't want to do it. So, I want to make it clear for them who they can contact, how to do it. I mean, some of these people aren't going to be on a computer. Some may still be on a landline. Well, I guess a lot of people are not, but I got a landline. I don't.
As we proceed with this, we're going to have, this should be a local group of a few people, right?
That's a local committee.
A local committee that probably could help with the situation.
Yeah, I hope so. Get somebody they can contact here.
Yeah, just as a real-life example, if you look at the bottom, the very bottom of that, you know, just sent out to Nashua residents, the phone number is right there in the middle.
Yeah, and then this is the website right here. And QR codes are becoming more popular, although, you know, not everyone's familiar with them. But that's, you just take out your phone.
If you went to a restaurant during the lockdown.
Yeah. I just worry about people who just might not get it. Yeah, in this town, I mean, we're an aging community.
And I would add, so to Mr. Teller's question or comment, yeah, committees and community outreach engagement are a big part of this. So, you know, we have partners, and we do sort of a media training. You have a member of the press here today, which I think is great. But also just working with a committee to sort of say, let's develop a community engagement plan on the run-up to launch and say, what are our local networks? What are the avenues we can get the word out through? Let's make a little, little action plan, and then give the committee tools to, you know, just a little bit here and there can go a long way in terms of getting the word out.
And just an aside, if you want to go to the Apple Craft Sphere, have brochures or something on this there on that one. Yes, Mr. Chairman? Druck, right?
Yes.
Okay, you have a question?
I do, if it's appropriate to ask now.
At the public forum, absolutely.
People will still make their payments to Eversource, correct?
Yes, they do.
So, where they pay or how they pay really doesn't change?
Correct. They may notice if the bill's gone down a little bit.
Some people will just worry for worry's sake, I think.
Oh, yes. So, this slide here is showing the current rates as compared to Eversource. So, maybe we could start on the right, and this is sort of a typical Coalition member is offering these four products, Granite Basic being the lowest, 2.1% content and the lowest price, and Clean 100 being the highest, the highest premium. All four of the options are currently at a discount to the Eversource supply rate of 20.2 cents. And on that basic, Granite Basic product, it's about a 20%, 22% discount for the customer. And these rates are effective through July 31st. Eversource rates will run, will change and become effective August 1, and run through the end of January, and then they'll change again February 1, run through the end of July, six-month cycles. And the Coalition has the flexibility to adjust rates as it chooses and will adjust rates with the objective of maintaining a discount to the utility month after month and every six-month period.
Can you speak to that a minute? Eversource has to go before the Public Utility Commission?
Correct.
In order to justify their rate increase, and it has to be granted by them. The Coalition can basically charge whatever they want because...
Because the Board of Directors sets the rates, and the board is individuals who are elected by the member towns. So, it's self-governed, it's sort of self-regulated.
But like, it's a buying co-op, basically?
It is, yeah.
And so, they basically can, they buy whatever they can, and they can set the rates they charge the members?
Yes, and so, the books are all transparent, and this is the trade-off that is the point of debate, is how much money are we giving back to the customer in a discount, and how much money are we putting into our nonprofit financial reserve so we know we can maintain that discount over time? So, when the winter comes around, we can lean on that a little bit and keep rates low, and we can be financially responsible and not, you know, risk bankruptcy or anything like that. So, that's the trade-off, financial reserve. How much money do we squirrel away? How much money do we give to the customer in discount?
So, the discounted, discount for the Granite Basic, let's say, if there are 20 communities that sign up for that one, all 20 communities will pay that same amount?
Yeah, the rates of the Coalition are uniform across the membership and across utility territories.
Another clarification, the community as a whole picks one rate, and everyone starts with it? Or can individuals with, in, say, like the Newport Coalition, can choose whether they want to be eco-friendly and pay more to get green energy or take the cheapest rate?
Yeah, it's the latter. So, the board of selectmen's job will say, what's the basic one? Do we want everyone to get the minimum renewable cheapest product, which is what most towns have chosen, Granite Basic? Or do we want to default everyone into 33% renewable energy? You could do either of those. But regardless, you as a board can decide, we want to give everybody the menu of four, and they can themselves then choose the eco-friendly one if they want, so.
Okay, if we choose to give everyone, you know, their choice, when they get that first letter saying you're being switched over, do they move in at the lowest level, and then they can choose to move up if they feel environmentally concerned?
Correct.
Okay.
Just to clarify, so the board of selectmen would determine that...
Default.
The town default, and then the individual rate payer could determine which program they want if not the default.
Correct.
So, if the town picked the 50% default, the 50% rate as the default, I as an individual consumer could then pick the basic?
That's correct, although we actually don't offer the grant, the Clean 50 as a default right now. The only two options for default are the 23% and the 33%.
Right, and I think I've seen a couple of communities that picked that 33.
Couple did. But so, let's say, for example, I'm not saying you would do this, but if the town Newport Board of Selectmen chose Granite Plus, 33% renewable was the default, any individual customer could opt down to the Granite Basic option.
Okay. Question for you. The Eversource supply power, is that green at all, or is that just a bunch of coal they're burning?
It's 20, it's the minimum allowed.
It's under the basic?
It's the same, it's the same as the basic.
Okay.
And that's a state law that says in 2023, every supplier's got to have 23%. In 2024, 24%, 2025, 25%, and then it flatlines.
So, even the basic people are 20-some percent green?
Yeah.
Because of the legislature demanding it?
Correct. Although, I mean, this is maybe a little bit of a tangent. If the legislature didn't demand it, they might still be 20-something percent green because that's just how much is in the marketplace.
Right, that's, you know, because, you know, the greener stuff is getting less expensive.
Right, and we can, we can look, I won't, I won't bomb, but we can look it up, right, and see what it is right now.
That's all right.
So, this is, this is, actually, this is dated. There are three new members, one of whom is kind of in your neighborhood, not really, but the town of Lyme, just, I think, just north of Hanover, joined. And then there are two others, Rollinsburg and Stroud on the seacoast. But these are the...
Enfield's closer to us.
Enfield, they've been, they were founding members. They've been, they've been in it for a long time, and they're enrolling customers this month, so. Those four, actually, Enfield, Plainfield, Hanover, Lebanon, they're all enrolling customers this month or over the next month. So, it's quite a large customer base. It's over 22% of the state population, as I mentioned, and 10 to, really, I guess 13 are going live this season with the remaining sort of similar place to where you are. Many of them have gone to a March town meeting, whereas we're going to a May town meeting. And that cohort is well-positioned to bring their programs online this coming spring, a year from now, really.
And that's what the cycle is, is communities go through the process, decide to come on board, get everything in place. It's like they're getting ready for the next spring.
Yeah, so there's a little bit of a misalignment between when town meeting happens and when the best time to launch is.
Okay.
Because you're, you really want to launch on April 1st, or not, just in generalities. Because you're, you really want to launch on April 1st, or not, just in generalities, that tends to be a good time to launch in spring, coming out of the high-priced winter. And so you got to rush a little bit if you got a March town meeting to do that, but you're, you're in a great position, sort of get, get things approved, think about this for the remainder of 2023, and then you have plenty of time to get ready for the, to launch at just the right moment in 2024.
Are the stars different colors for any other reason than to?
Just because that's what was in the box.
They're not.
So there's no, okay.
I'm going to make these slides black and white next time.
That was a question last meeting.
Yeah, I get it all the time, and it's, I should listen, I should change them, but.
The colors don't mean anything, they should be all the color.
Yeah, no, I think, I think I agree.
But it looks nice this way. And we get that question.
Everybody should get a gold star after.
So you've had your two, this could be updated, but you've had your two public hearings, and really, these are, these are the questions that are before the committee tonight. And really, there are two purposes to my presence here. The first is the public hearing of the plan, and the second is to extend an invitation on behalf of the coalition for the Board of Selectmen to join the coalition and join this group of communities. And that is achieved by adoption of the Joint Powers Agreement, which is the bylaws of our nonprofit. So that's a question that is available for the board. And then the other question available to the board is the establishment of your Community Power Committee. So that's, that's an option for you.
Question for you, do we need to wait until approval of town meeting before doing the Joint Power Committee and setting up the committee?
No, you, you really should do the, set up the committee before town meeting, and you may do the Joint Powers Agreement before or after.
But then if it fails at town meeting?
Then you just, you just cancel your Joint Powers Agreement and walk away.
Yeah, we're close enough, we can wait a couple weeks, probably. Hunter?
So this document that you mistook as a, as an agenda, the three questions that Henry has just alluded to are listed under action. Those are the three items that you should do, we're recommending you take action on either tonight or at your next meeting. Those are the three items that really should be done prior to the vote on the night.
Okay. My feeling is to take action on it next Monday because we'll have a bigger audience and we'll be able to talk about this some more in terms of a different crowd.
And so, but you, you will, you will need to take action on those before the vote.
Right, which would be next?
That's fine, yeah. If you have, if you have any reason in your mind that you think you, I mean, it's going to be really important that you do it, I guess.
If it's on the agenda as an action item, you can do it.
After, sorry. So that's sort of, that's your pre-town meeting checklist, and then you have your town meeting, and the voters can choose whether or not they want to adopt the plan. And if they do do that, then you'll go ahead and you'll send that plan off to the State Public Utility Commission, and they'll take 60 days to review it and approve it. And then you can choose a service provider and enter into contracts for services. So coalition is one such sort of.
Have anyone chosen another service provider, any community?
There are, there are a couple of private brokers in the market. There are, yeah, the coalition is the only joint powers agency, the only nonprofit version of this. And then this is in preparation for noticing customers in spring, perhaps March 2024, and prepare them for enrollment in April.
Okay, question. The Public Utilities Commission, is that a New Hampshire commission?
Correct.
We have to submit our community plan to them for approval.
This is, this is more just to, this is an internal tracker, but just to illustrate there, this is one high-level timeline. We have sort of a very detailed project management system that we use in compliance with the regulatory rules. These are the same tasks, but there are certain things, like you have to submit a registration to the state, there's a data request, there's, these are your electrification plan, which we're discussing. And then post-town meeting, there is a sequence of steps in terms of further data requests for mailing, approval of contracts, publishing web pages, purchasing power, et cetera, et cetera. So I won't bore you with all those details, but this is just to let you know that there is sort of a professional workflow behind the scenes that we'll walk you through every step of the way. And that summarizes, that concludes the presentation. Happy to have other questions or discussion.
Any questions? You mentioned the term data, which, what, other than addresses and things, what are you going to collect for data?
So there's three, it's a good question. There's three separate data requests. The first one is you get community electricity data, how much, how many residential customers, and how much power do they use a year? How many commercial customers, how much power do they use a year? How many of them on Eversource power, how many of them on a third-party? That's the first dataset. After you go to town meeting, you can get a second dataset, which is anonymized, but it is monthly usage for every electric account. So we will receive a spreadsheet that has a line item for every electric account and the monthly amount of power they use, anonymized, so you can't tell who it is.
And who gives you that data?
The utility company.
Okay.
And this is so that we can have a very informed procurement, how we can know exactly how we want to purchase power. And then, so neither of those are personally identifying. They don't, they're not associated with any individual.
Okay.
The third is personally identifying, and that is data that we handle in accordance with our data protection policy, and that doesn't actually even touch the town if you don't want it to. But that is the customer name, the customer mailing address, customer account number, and that's so we can do the mailer, and that's also from the utility company.
Good, thank you.
Now, this program works for people who are with Eversource. We have customers here that are on the co-op.
Yes, so they would not be enrolled.
Okay.
They would get the letter, and it would say, you can join if you want, but we're not going to switch you. And that's because they have quite competitive pricing relative to Eversource because they have a similar procurement strategy.
Okay, so, so similar like in my case, I'm getting my power through ENH Power or whatever it is, you know, which is a little less than Eversource right now. So basically, I would get a letter saying I could join, but it would not say you've been switched because I'm on someone other than Eversource's default power provider.
That's correct, and it's actually, yeah, that's actually, that's exactly correct.
But it, but it will tell me if I do want to switch, I can do this, and will it have a caution there saying, you know, check, check for any penalties for early cancellation of contract or anything?
It does say that for folks like who are on ENH.
Okay.
For the co-op, it just says you have the option, you know, compare your rates, because there's no cancellation fee for co-op.
Yeah, I do have one with ENH Power. But by next summer, I should be fairly close to the end of the period, so it's, I'm waiting a few months if I switch.
I read recently that there was a dispute between Eversource and the coalition about net metering records, I believe. I believe there was insufficient records or Eversource wasn't sure where their records were or something of that nature. Will that have an effect on the rates being offered?
It is correct that there is a dispute over accessing net metering customers' data. How much power do they put on the grid? And for that reason, net metered customers are not going to be switched in until we know how much to credit them for the power they're generating. But that will not have any effect on the rates, no.
And that won't affect, under our town situation?
Basically, the folks who have solar, they'll stay out of the program until we resolve this data question with utility.
Okay, and we've been talking residential customers here. This also applies to businesses and commercial customers?
It does, it applies to businesses, commercial customers. When you get to the largest industrial class of customer, that's maybe a case by case and probably not, they're probably already doing their own thing, but yeah, for a typical Main Street business, they're, they would participate.
All right, so they would get the letter like everyone else, you know, and if they're on Eversource, they would be switched automatically?
Yes.
For everyday conversation, I've tried to explain to people that residential and retailers will be eligible, commercial will be eligible, but not industrial. And I don't know how to really quantify that, but you can do it in your own head. It would be people like Ruger, Carol Concrete, they do a valleys, they're large enough so they're probably going out and created their own agreements with, and you correct me if I'm wrong, but they've probably gone out and created their own agreements. But the average everyday, you know, Main Street retailer will be eligible. It's really the industrial users.
But if a larger user, say like La Valley's or even Ruger, you know, takes a look at your rates and says, these rates are even better than what we're getting now, they could either use it as a bargaining chip with their current provider, or could they switch to?
So we, our intention is absolutely to develop special rates and products for the largest customer class. We don't have those at this launch date, but that's, that's a priority for later this year.
Okay, so that's, right, you got to start somewhere.
We could, and we could have those as soon as spring of next year. That's another exciting task for the new CEO is to develop some products for the, for the largest commercial class.
There's certainly one concern of ours on the Board of Selectmen is the high cost of electricity here in New England, especially companies like Ruger that have other facilities in states where the cost of electricity is a lot less. Fortunately, the workforce here in New England is a lot better than what they have elsewhere, so that keeps them there. Any other questions here? Anything you want to add? Any things, other things we should consider or?
I guess what I would add is if and when the board adopts the Joint Powers Agreement, which could be on the agenda for Monday.
Yes.
You will also want to consider the appointment of a member representative to the coalition. Who, maybe one of you throughout the board, maybe your town manager, maybe a volunteer from the community.
Yes.
Do you want to appoint to attend the, perhaps three times a year, membership meeting? You can attend virtually, and this is where, you know, we elect our board and we conduct certain business, so that's just one other consideration is who is that individual?
Yeah, maybe a community member who brought this to our attention. May hear from a volunteer. What is the website people can go to to learn more? Can you repeat that?
Yes, there are two. The first is?
Okay.
www.cpcnh.org for Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire. And then the second, this is the customer-facing website for customers switching in and out, that's communitypowernh.gov.
That's known for switching. Now, being a .gov basically means it's sort of a quasi-governmental, hinted here.
That's right.
All right.
So because the coalition is created by New Hampshire municipalities and have governed and owned by them, it is essentially, it's an agency of municipal government. It's a creature that was created by municipal government and works and exists to serve them on their own.
Okay. Good. Anything else?
Done excellent job again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good questions.
Yep.
Sorry we didn't have a bigger crowd here.
No worries.
All right, in that case, I will close this public hearing. Is there anything else come before the board tonight? Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.